Order of the Scarborough Town Council Meeting of Wednesday, June 6th, 2018. And if you would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Counselor Baybine.
President.
Counselor Rowan.
Here.
Counselor Foley.
Here.
Counselor Caterina.
Here.
Counselor Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Kiazlo.
Here.
Chairman Donovan.
President. General public comments, anyone having, wishing to address the town council on matters, not on the agenda, just state your name and address and proceed, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Rocco Rizberra, 287 Black Point Road. I'm here representing Crossroads Holdings LLC tonight, and I just wanted to take a minute of the council's time to thank them for acting at the May 16th meeting. Because you did act at that meeting and go ahead and take the vote and not wait till tonight, that allowed us to move forward. We are currently working two letters of intent with two end users for that light industrial zone area. Those letters of intent are, I can't name who they're with right now, but they're, I can assure the council that they're both companies that Scarborough would be very happy to have here in our town. So, I wanted to let you know that it was, I know some of you felt uncomfortable with taking a vote so quickly after, after public hearing, but that timeframe did mean something to us. It also means that we can make our submission to the planning board and we should get on the July agenda for the master plan process to start in that light industrial zone area, which will get that ball rolling and should allow us to, to keep on track with our approval process, so that these, these businesses can come to our town. So, I just wanted to just say thank you and give you a little update on where we're at. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Closed public comment, minutes of May 16, 2018, I'll, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections or amendments? See none, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. There are no adjustments to the agenda and I have signed the treasurer's warrants, having shown up early. Order 18-30, 7:00 PM public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance of the town of Scarborough, Maine, Section Roman numeral four definitions and Section Roman numeral 17B, Higginson Parkway District B permitted uses, conventional and planned developments, and I'll ask the planning director, Jay Chase, to introduce this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Knowing that this is public hearing, we went over this a bit at your last meeting, or actually meeting in April, I'm not going to spend too much time, but I do want to give you some updates on what's happened since your April 18th first reading. By way of quick background, as you just mentioned, this is a proposed amendment to both the Higginson Parkway District and our definition section, where the conversation really began with conversations with the Sedco staff and my staff, looking at how the treatment of accessory storage of materials and goods was treated in the Higginson Parkway District differently than any, than other commercial districts. It had certain limitations that weren't, that aren't present in those other commercial districts, and is really trying to equalize that. So, there's a proposal to delete sort of a language that talks about accessory warehousing and distribution uses in the Higginson Parkway District, and really leave it as just standard accessory uses, which is an otherwise defined term in our district. As we looked at that language, the other thing that came to, came to bear is, well, what does warehousing and distribution mean? We have those uses as listed permitted uses in other zones, the industrial district and light industrial district, and so where uses are listed as permitted in one district, that means, and they're not listed, if they're not listed in another district, then they're not otherwise allowed there. So, we thought it'd be helpful to actually have definitions of these two types of activities, and so those were also being proposed. At first reading, some council members raised some good questions, they're always good questions, about some of the language and if they're, around some clarity of language, and so we, we took those notes, we held a public hearing with planning board and received some similar comments. So, staff, Karen and I were able to take both council and planning boards' thoughts back to our long-range planning committee and talk about those and make some modifications to the language, which we hope helps to, to swage some of those earlier concerns. So, I believe in your packets, what you have is a, sort of a revised version, it's, these are really language changes, I would say they're not substantive changes, the concept's still the same, but they really do help clarify and codify exactly what we're proposing to do, so that's my interpretation.
Questions in the council for Mr. Chase? Thank you, Jay. Public comment, anyone wishing to address this matter, please approach the podium. This is a public hearing, so we'll have a second reading at our next meeting, at which point there will be an amendment to consider the changes that were proposed that were run through the long-range planning committee and the planning board. Thank you. All business, none at this time, new business. Order 18-41, first reading and schedule a public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 601, the traffic ordinance, Section 25A1, to eliminate year-round parking along Black Point Road. And I'll ask the ordinance chair, Counselor Caterina, to introduce this one.
Yes, thank you. Actually, I should say, just on a portion of Black Point Road, I know some people are a little confused by that, but basically what this is, it was brought to me by the police department, and I, it's, it's, having a, a small area in front of where the Scarborough Beach entrance is, be banned to year-round parking, because in winter, there've been issues with people not paying attention and thinking it's not open when it is, and da-da, and blocking, and, and they have had issues there, so the police department brought this forward. We discussed it in ordinance and are moving it to the council, so we did have them change it to be 50 feet on either side of the post, so.
Thank you. Public comment, anyone public wishing to address this matter, please approach the podium. Accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Caterina, anything for the, your.
No, no, I think it's pretty straightforward, I think it'd be very helpful, because I know when I walked down there in this year, this winter, I happened to walk right into a hornet's nest of issues that were going on with someone who was parked too close and they couldn't get someone in, and whatever, so I've seen some of the issues myself.
Counselor Foley.
I just have a question, so is it, is it just, it was still the issue, is that maybe in the winter, perhaps, the snow banks are so high, people don't see where the entrance is, they block the entrance, that's what the concern is?
No, they assume that, that there's.
That it's closed.
That it's closed, and then sight distance for people, because it's open most of the year, and actually, I believe it's open all year round to some pass holders, so, yeah, this is a safety issue. It's a safety issue.
Right. Okay.
Other comments, Counselors.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm down there quite a bit, I have two dogs and down in that area, and I've, I've never noticed it being a problem, I haven't gotten any emails or anything from anybody suggesting that's a problem, just 50 feet is quite, it's like five car lengths, right, on either side of the entrance?
Yep.
Approximately.
Less, I think 18 to 20 feet is a parking space.
So, I'm just, I'm just, you know, and again, it becomes an issue too, of, I know we've passed a ordinance recently where enforcement of these things are really becoming an issue, whether it's the stickers on trash cans or some other things, I'm just wondering, it hasn't percolated for me, I've been down there quite a bit, I haven't seen anybody blocking the entrance and exit.
You're fortunate.
Well, but it hasn't, it hasn't bubbled up, I mean, usually we get some type of emails or notifications from folks that there's an issue, I haven't observed it, so I'm just curious about.
Did this come from the police department?
Yes, it came from the police department, and it was quite an issue this, this winter, and I was getting emails from constituents and also calls from the police department, so just asking.
I, I, I'm there often, and what I have observed is that when they have a line to get in, they're, they actually stack them on the beach side of the road, the side on which these 50-foot setbacks, because there's no way really to do a U-turn, so that if you're trying to get in line to enter the park, you're not going to drive all the way down Ferry Beach, turn around and come back, people would be turning around in other people's driveways, which is inappropriate, and so I, I think they've had a practice of actually have people lining up, going in the wrong direction to enter the park, and I, I, that's the only condition that I've ever observed. Counselor.
Yeah, and that's in summer. This issue is more in the winter, because summer, there's no parking, there's, because I checked the, I checked the ordinance, because there's no parking along that stretch from what, May to September or something, yeah.
May 1st to September 15.
This is more to address the winter issues, because Scarborough Beach is a popular place to walk on in the winter for a number of people, and they do park in the street, I'm one of them, and in the last, this winter in particular, they had a few incidents with people, I got calls from people who got tickets, and it was just, there's a lot of miscommunications going on about what's allowed and not down there, that to me, this makes sense, it just makes it very clear, very concise, that year-round, you know, just stay clear of that particular area, you can park anywhere else, you know, along that side.
And Counselor Hayes raises a good point, is it an overreach in terms of the distance? And I would say 50 feet, if this is, the, the problem is around the entranceway, 50 feet probably is okay, I mean, I, I'm not going to second guess the police department on it, because I think that's, you know, that's three cars, and so it wouldn't take much, you wouldn't be part, you wouldn't be prohibited from parking very far, you'd still be at the split rail fence and, and being able to enter there, so, Peter.
Yeah, I think it's like to make a question, though, I think, you know, Counselor Caterina said she'd received several emails complaining about it, those types of things should be shared with all of us, so that we kind of know there's an issue, this, this was, I, I've not seen a single email about this, so it, it kind of surprises me that the police are concerned.
And maybe, maybe we can get a little more information for the public hearing?
I think that'd be great.
And the second reading, so that we, we are satisfied?
Yep.
That we're dealing with something that's real?
That's a great idea. Did, I, I heard you say, you, we intended this to only be on the eastern side of the street?
Yes.
Because it, my read of this doesn't suggest that it's only one side.
I thought so too, and I wasn't quite sure.
It could say eastern, we could, do you want me to amend it?
Can, can we get, well.
It does say entrance and exit.
See, it, it says the intersections, and so I read it about five times, trying to figure out from a directional point of view, was it correct or not, and I figured some, someone in here would. Why don't we, why don't we ask the, who drafted it? Is this?
I think Larissa actually drafted it, but it was based on input from the police department. If it serves you, would we certainly have the president of the public hearing to just explain what their observations are and why they brought forward?
That'd be great. That'd be really helpful.
And I think the council would appreciate if Larissa would look at the language and make sure the east, west, north, south references are correct.
If, if that's the intent, that it shouldn't be on the list, right?
Right. Good. Further discussion? See none, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. 18-42, act on the request from the Appointments Negotiations Committee to approve the recommendations to the various committee boards. I'll ask Counselor Baybine to introduce this matter.
And for the record, I did want to explain that tonight's request is actually to approve, usually it goes through a two, two-step process, but we've been requested by several of the committees that are receiving new members to expedite this, because they are having trouble with quorums and getting members to attend, so we want to ask for your consideration to be able to approve those this evening, and I'm happy to do this in the form of a motion, if someone will then second it. The cable T, I'm sorry, the Appointments Committee recommends for the Cable Access Television Committee to appoint Art Dillon with a term to expire in 2018, Douglas Forrester and Benjamin Howard with a term to expire in 2019, Julie Kuchenberger, Richard Lizell and Mark Maroon with terms to expire in 2020. For the Coastal Waters and Harbor Advisory Committee, the Appointments Committee recommends Michael Lynch to be removed from the committee due to a lack of attendance, that Calvin Bailey and Maria Oddlin be appointed as full voting members to fill a term to expire in 2018, and to appoint Peter Ainges as an alternate with a term to expire in 2018. For the Senior Advisory Committee, the committee recommends Carol Spencer to be moved to a full voting member with a term to expire in 2018. The Zoning Board of Appeals recommends Melina, I'm sorry, the committee recommends Melina Torrens on the Zoning Board of Appeals to be appointed a full voting member with a term to expire in 2019, and that was in the form of a motion.
Second.
Public comment, anyone wishing to comment on the appointments motion, please approach the podium. Debate, discussion, and I'll recognize Counselor Baybine.
So, of course, whenever we have new members and even returning citizens who have an interest, that's wonderful to have the names coming forward, while all of our committees are very special to all of us, it's nice to see that we have six voting members on the cable access television. Counselor Kiazlo, I told you I would get that thing started. There is still one full voting member and an alternate that could be appointed to that committee, but their goal is to get started as quickly as possible, and it's nice to see that Peter Ainges is returning, he is a longtime member of the Shellfish Committee many, many moons ago, so to have him back on the coastal waters and getting him involved is a nice addition as well.
And Counselor Baybine, I'll accept a motion to suspend the rules.
It's already in the motion itself, so you don't need to change that, because of the way that it was worded by the clerk.
Good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Other comments, Counselor Kaiser.
Just for public clarity, everybody whose date was expiring 2018 is December 31st.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and I have no comment on the public cable.
Whether it was a suspend, the.
I don't think so.
No. No. It, it probably is not clear enough that we're suspending the rules, so I think in the interests of clarity, I'd like to take a, have a motion to suspend first, and then we'll act on the motion that's on.
Sure, so moved. Second.
Discussion on the motion to suspend, Counselor Foley.
So, I, you know, I don't, not familiar with all those names, and we weren't privy to the list of names earlier, but in terms of just suspending the rules, I just caution us about doing that, because I'm not sure I understand what the, in terms of the cable company, I get it, or the cable committee, because we've been wanting that for a very long time, but I, I'm not sure that I see, you know, committee work can still be ongoing, even if a vote is not necessarily taken, work can be happening while we move towards a, a goal, and those people can still participate in the process, so I'm, I'm just always hesitant when we deviate from our processes, because I think that is something that throws people off, and for whatever reason, right, wrong, or indifferent, it tends to, you know, go to the trust issue that we seem to have in town. So, I, I'm happy to support this, and I'm grateful for all these people for stepping up, but I just wanted to put on record that I am hesitant in moving as quickly tonight because of the rule suspension.
Other comments? I see none, voting on the motion to suspend the rule that we post at the first meeting and vote only at the second meeting, so as to allow us to vote to, on these nominations at tonight's meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Comment on the main motion? Peter.
Just for clarity, Counselor Baybine, you said, you mentioned Julie's name, which, which committee was that? The superintendent? Or did I, did I not hear that?
No, that was correct.
Yep, well, cable TV.
On cable TV.
Cable TV, and so just to add, I, I thought that would get a couple of people's interests, but it's actually a very nice fit, I mean, of course, she's a resident, she's eligible to participate in any committee of the, of the town as a citizen, but as the executive for our school department, they have control over one of the two channels that we have, so bringing her in and her access to resources to share in the cable television kind of direction, I think is a, it's a great combination.
Can you read, it was quick, so can you just read the other names on the cable?
Sure, Art Dillon, you probably know him from Chamber of Commerce concerts in the park, Doug Forrester and Ben Howard, I remember Doug from years ago, but I don't remember exactly his background, no, I'm sorry, Doug is actually a Spectrum, former executive for senior level manager at Spectrum, and everyone knows Ben as the frequent visitor to the chambers. Julie Kuchenberger, Richard Lizell and Mark Maroon, Richard recently retired from the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as I believe Mark Maroon did as well, and I know Mark has done some cable television work in the past, that's how I met him and Kevin Freeman, actually, so.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you just repeat the Shellfish, was it just the one, or was it?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't Shellfish, it was Coastal Waters.
Oh, Coastal Waters.
And it was to remove Michael Lynch for non-attendance, promote Calvin Bailey and Maria Oddlin to full voting members, and to name Peter Ainges as an alternate.
If I could make a comment, that committee has not been able to meet, to even organize, as you're well aware, so they'll be happy to know that they have a full, full membership now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Counselor Foley.
So, I don't want to be the negative one tonight, but I guess I will, a little bit, in that, again, I'm, I'm going to support this, because I don't feel like these are, there's anything super contentious here, but I want us to be aware that sometimes we have certain committees that are highly, what's the, competitive and sought after, people really, like, if it's planning board or something, people really want to get on those committees, and if we do things outside of the realm of our normal operating procedures, and in this particular case, we had a, a non-standing committee member vote on moving this forward, is that correct?
No.
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 Okay, so what was, okay, I thought I was on, I was under the impression that.
She attended, but did not vote.
Okay, was, was there a forum?
Yes, there were two of us.
Okay, okay, then I guess I misunderstood the intent of the email, and then it doesn't even, what I'm saying doesn't mean, it doesn't, isn't relevant, so it doesn't matter.
No, the, the purpose of the email was to allow for a, when a person is absent, the chair can sit in, ex officio on any of the committees, and vote.
Right.
But we don't have the authority to have the chair, or anyone else, appoint a person to, to sit in and vote, when the chair would not be able to be there himself or herself, so that, that was the reason for the email.
But there were two of you were there, so it was fine.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so non-issue.
And if I could just, because it came up with Counselor Hayes and with Counselor Foley, about like Counselor Hayes not knowing, you know, that there were concerns with Scarborough Beach, whatever, just remember that all of these committee meetings are open to all counselors at any time, and I certainly encourage you to follow the notes and whatever that come out of that, if you can't make the meetings, or if you have an interest in them, because you can certainly attend, as I did, and I don't, you know, I didn't vote, but I attended, so I could make my thoughts known, so just a reminder of that, to all counselors.
Counselor Hayes.
Well, I, I think that's a little disingenuous, too, I mean, some of us have jobs, you know, eight to five, and so it's a little hard and, too, I think it is important, and it goes to the trust issue, because we didn't have the names, and this is supposed to be public comment, folks in the audience and our constituents didn't know the names on the list, so that is a problem. There needs to be transparency, so folks know what we're talking about, who's on the list, so if anybody had an objection, they could be here to have a conversation.
Counselor Gary.
I, I'm sorry that you, you took offense at my comment, it wasn't, it wasn't meant in that manner at all, we all, we all, well, I'm sorry, but we all have jobs.
So, most of them have flexibility to be here eight to five, so.
Well, but, but we do have notes and whatever that come out of the meetings.
We got the notes today.
No, no, I'm talking about committee meetings, and I'm not.
We're talking about this community.
All right, all right, okay, that's fine.
One person should be recognized at a time.
Yeah, thank you, but that, that's all, I mean, and I wasn't trying to make any disparaging comments by any, that was not my intent, but I do, I do think that, you know, as council members, I know I keep up with, with notes and what's going on with various committees, just because I feel that that's my job, too, but anyway, that being said.
Counselor.
The, the point is, we did not have the names until just now.
No, and I understand that, but I'm also talking, referring to the other.
We're talking about this specifically, we did not have the names tonight, that's what we're speaking to, it's, it's, just as we think about trust in our community, we didn't know, the community didn't know, that's something we should be aware of.
Any further discussion? Counselor Baybine.
Just for reference, the Appointments Committee, for as long as I've been on this council, including my past tenures, have never pre-printed the names of any of the appointees, because the committee always meets generally within the timeframe where it can't be published within the agenda, and they always post it verbally at the first meeting, so that's why no one received it ahead of time, because that is our practice. So that's why no one received it ahead of time, because that is our practice.
Further comment? Counselor Hayes.
I would like to make a recommendation that in the future, we try to have these names available ahead of time so the public can understand who's on the list, and we can understand as council members before the night of, who's on the list. That's a procedural change that I would recommend that we adopt.
That is already the case. We already post the names.
Sean just said the names weren't posted.
At, at, at the meeting at which we have the first posting, the names are available, and then we vote at the second meeting.
We're suspending those.
So the public knows, but we're suspending the rules in this circumstance because of the unusual circumstance where committees aren't able to meet. Do you understand?
Bill, I understand. Do you understand how that, what the perception of the public is?
There is this special circumstance. Counselor Kiazler.
So I don't, I don't want to add fuel to the fire, but I find it interesting that we're talking about the suspension of rules for an appointments committee yet during budget season, and other discussions, we suspended rules and procedures to accommodate people's need for longer periods of time. So if we're going to hold ourselves accountable to process, it needs to be processed period, not discretionary re-rule and discretionary acceptance. I don't see the challenge here. We're not talking about, we're talking about volunteering positions in the town of Scarborough. If you're uncomfortable with, if a counselor is uncomfortable with this position, vote in the opposition.
Other comments? Counselor Foley.
Yeah, and I, look, I wasn't trying to start a ordinance test for, for real. And again, these particular appointments, I don't think are necessarily contentious, but I have seen committees in the past that have been very contentious. And so just stating that I'm a little uncomfortable with the way it went, I'm happy to know that now that it was a quorum, I was mistaken, you know, and I'm happy to approve these, and I'm extremely happy and pleased that you got the cable committee going. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Counselor Bayvine.
I just wanted to mention that I think Counselor Hayes' comment regarding about future postings in advance, I will definitely take that into consideration and do my best.
Thank you. Further comment? Counselor Gaterina.
And, and, I mean, I absolutely understand what Counselor Hayes is saying about the appointments committee stuff tonight. My reference was also to the parking issue prior to the, and it's just, again, it's just a heads up to any of us to just stay up to date on what's going on with various committees. That was the only, my only...
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, we're voting on the appointment committee nominations to approve the recommendations. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Non-action items, standing committee and special committee reports, and ladies on reports. Chris, start down with you.
So, Energy Committee, I think we met private, prior to this, to talk with a group on carbon tax credits. That, I may have neglected to report that from the last, the last meeting. Long-range planning has met twice. Long-range planning is in the mode now where there, we're having a meeting to discuss specifically the comprehensive plan, and then a separate standalone meeting to discuss regular long-range planning business. So the meeting on May 24th was to look at comprehensive plan updates. We looked at a draft for baseline infrastructure. We looked at draft for municipal revenue, draft for economic development through SEDCO's input, and talked a little bit about public process. Those recommendations were discussed in long-range planning, kicked back for adjustments and back to the consultant. And then on June 1st, long-range planning met for regular business. We discussed the Higas Parkway warehousing issue that was in front of the council today for a public hearing, and we reviewed SEDCO's Vision Committee's economic development policies that will also be forwarded along to the consultant for the comprehensive plan.
Counselor Hayes.
Nothing to say.
Counselor Gaterina.
Yeah, a couple of things. Senior Advisory Board, I was not able to make their last meeting because of work commitments, but they are working on an AARP friendly designation for the town, and they've started to include other committees and groups in town to get involved with that, so I'm really happy with that, and that was definitely one of my, my personal goals for us to try to get that. Greater Portland Council of Governments did their summit, the annual summit. I went, Counselor Donovan was there. I did a big one-minute presentation, you should have seen me on the senior property tax, you have to do a one-minute presentation, but anyway. Jay Chase did a presentation for the town. It was very well-attended. It was at St. Joseph's College, and I did get some good feedback after my really fast four-minute presentation. Some other towns, again, are very interested in what we're doing, so stay tuned. I'm expecting to have some people maybe reaching out to me on that. And communications, please plan to meet briefly, I'm looking at Eddie and Sean on the 14th at 5:30, basically to go over the draft that we did, and also I would like to talk also about how we could work with the cable, since we now have a cable committee ongoing. And we will have an ordinance meeting the following week, the 21st, and I, just to let the public know, one of the things we're going to discuss, it's just going to be a discussion, I'd like to get feedback on signs, 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 since we've gone through a couple of sign issues in town. And there'll be a couple of other things, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Foley.
Two next week, but nothing since we last met.
Thank you.
So the Affordable Housing Committee, excuse me, Scarborough Housing Alliance met. We did not have a quorum, but we did have a very healthy discussion around what kind of guidance we can give to a developer who wishes to build a home to be owner-occupied with, using there to meet the obligation for an affordable density bonus. And we really struggled with it. There's still some work to do there, and we're going to be focusing on that in future meetings. We didn't, we didn't come away with a decision about how we can definitively put into a legal document that, that this house was required to be sold to someone who's affordable eligible. We also had trouble defining how to price the home, and so we have a little bit more work to do, or considerable more work to do, I think, there to clarify. Historic Preservation Implementation Committee meeting met, committee met last night. That was our last meeting before our summer hiatus. One update that I wanted to report out was around the historic property list that I mentioned last time I reported out. That's been discussed to the, passed to the planning department. The planning department is planning to do some outreach this summer, and just to clarify, that was around making some corrections to the, to the list that we currently have in our ordinance around some houses that are misidentified and others that we can drop off because they've been rebuilt, and then, and some that were potentially missed originally. So there's going to be some outreach this summer, and then we'll pass the ordinance for the, for the full process. That's all.
Counselor Bayvine.
Thank you. Appointments and negotiations met this past week. You saw the product, at least on the appointment side. I will have, I just got the list from the clerk, I will have an updated list next week. There are several, still several other committees that would love to have a volunteer join them, and I'll have that list. Did want to mention that, so now we are taking part in at least being informed by staff around our negotiations with any bargaining unit and contracts on the town side. We did receive an update from the HR Director and the Manager regarding the police bargaining units contract, which has been entered into. Keep in mind that we're there as a executive-level overseer for that, so the committee did not, we met in executive session and heard regarding the confidential nature of what they're asking for, so, but we did not vote on any type of recommendations because, one, I think the full council needs to be informed. And so the goal of our committee is that somewhere as around the week of June 20th, maybe the week before, the appointments committee will have a, an executive session to go over the final pieces of that contract, and we'd like to invite all of the town councilors there. Of course, we will only have three that do any vote, a recommendation to the full council, but I think you all need to be there so you can hear the nuances of what's being requested, which, they're pretty typical requests in labor contracts, so, I mean, everything from pay increases to, I mean, it's quite a spectrum, nothing too confidential, at least the terms. But, so, I actually may not be in attendance if it's the week of the 20th, because I go to my boy state program my 35th year, so the, I might ask the chair to actually reside over that committee with Chris and to run that, so we'll see, and I'll, you know, send out and notice everyone when that, when I do get that information. And by the way, if you want to know what some of the, some of those items are now, I'm happy to share them confidentially. I won't put them in writing, but I, I'll be happy to take anybody's phone call if you want some details.
Thank you. Metro Regional Coalition met in Portland, and we are continuing to work on homelessness issues and how the region can tackle that. As Counselor Caterina said, I attended the GP COG annual meeting. The seminars there were excellent for regional issues, and the planning board has the Scarborough Downs matter backed up before it for Jay for the next meeting.
Yep.
For Pod 1 or?
Yes, Phase 1.
For Phase 1, which is nearest to Route 1. Town managers report.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I meant, and I apologize to everyone, I meant to mention that the town council will be having a informational talk to a counselor table at the election on June 12th, and there are three of us who'll be able to fill in on some of the busiest times, so at least be information out there. Thank you, I forgot to mention that.
Thank you. Town managers report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I passed my opportunity last meeting, as I recall, I was running late, and I think we all had a sense of getting out, so...
We still do.
I appreciate that, though. I do want to provide a couple of updates if I could, so I'll move as quickly as I can. These are kind of, I'll characterize them as project updates. Eastern Trail Project is moving right along, moving through final design. Next steps will be to communicate back out with the eight different landowners that we've already had communication with through the years to secure right-of-way, in the most case, easements. Those are discussions that, that will be going on through the course of the summer, and the schedule we're on is to bid this out over the winter, and construction to begin spring next year. So that's always been the schedule, we seem to be right on target. Public safety building, a lot has been happening in this regard. I think the council may be aware that we did hold a public hearing, it happened on the same evening, April 25th, as you're hearing here, to receive additional public input. There was some really terrific input provided at that meeting, such that the design of the roadway through the park was modified fairly significantly to accommodate some of the concerns raised. And to that end, that plan was presented this week to the planning board. It's my understanding that the project did receive favorable advisory opinion from the planning board, and so that piece is done. We're also in process with state permitting as we speak, and that's always known to, known to be the kind of biggest question mark in our timeline. We're still hopeful that we're looking at a September 1 start date, but by the end of this month in June, we will have a guaranteed maximum price for the site work, which is a big question mark. It's a complicated and expensive piece of the project. And then by the end of July, we'll actually have a total guaranteed maximum price for the entire project. So again, everything is lining up to be on that schedule, waiting for permits. Also, next week, I will be issuing an RFP for the relocation of the three single-family homes that the town owns, and looking for folks interested in taking those, relocating them elsewhere, ideally in town, not putting that restriction on. And I think Counselor Rowan reported the last meeting, the Scarborough Housing Alliance has chosen not to further complicate that by attaching any kind of covenants or the like. So we're, we're pleased, everything's really falling into place there. The LED streetlight upgrade is about two-thirds complete. I don't know if you've seen the bucket trucks around town, but they're kind of caravans, two-person teams. We expect in about 10 days, they'll be complete, kind of what we call Phase 1, and then we'll be moving right into the residential neighborhoods. Those require, they're different types of fixtures, and so it requires a little different logistical approach. So I don't know if you, just pay attention as you're driving around town at night to see if you can see different than the light quality. I would love, note that the major routes, Route 1, Payne Road, Pleasant Hill, those have not been done yet, and that's because they get a higher wattage, and so they'll do those all at once, again, sometime in the next 10 days. And lastly, paving is, has begun and will continue through this month, and I'll mention the projects on the, on slate for this time of year. Commerce Drive from Evergreen Farms up to Route 1, Down East Lane, Prospector Lane, Susan Avenue, and portions of Blue, Old Blue Point Road, Winixneck Road, Payne Road, and Broad Turn Road. We expect to have nearly all of that complete this month. We have a window of opportunity with our paving contractor that we're trying to, to hit with them. If not, we'll be looking at probably late fall by the time we can get them back here. Also, the Board of Assessment Review met on May 22nd. This was the taxpayer remand from the Superior Court back to the local Board of Assessment Review. They have scheduled another meeting on June 12th at 1:00 in these chambers to make a final decision, and that decision will be complete with written findings of fact, conclusions, and their final decision. So we're anxious to get that, that known, and as soon as it is, I'll share that out with council and the public. Also, just, I guess, two last things, a little forewarning for your next meeting on June 20. These aren't certain, but Jay Chase is in receipt of two different contract zone requests. It goes to him initially for kind of a completeness review, so I'm saying it, this may be a little prematurely, but just to put you on notice, the first one would be for a new, a brand-new contract zone for the Clearview Condo Association. It's, essentially would allow them to do some residential development of lots still owned by the association along Portland Farms Road. Counselor Bayvine might be interested in this one, since he lives in the neighborhood.
Sure, that's a vacant lot.
It's actually, yeah, it's a vacant lot, and it's potentially as many as three building lots, as I understand it. The other one is a contract zone amendment request for Piper Shores. This is for them to build additional independent living units on property they have under option across the street. It's 45 acres of property that is located on the other side of Spurlink Road, but it is somewhat contiguous with their existing campus. And the, the last piece that I believe is confirmed at this point, the Pine Point Co-op, there's a lot of history there, and I'm starting to sift through it and understand it better myself, but it's potentially going to be sold, the shares of that sold to an individual. And there's a number of, the town has been an active participant in the ownership of that property, and has active rights, if you will, or they need to come back for approvals and so on and so forth. So we'd like to come forward in a workshop format to introduce the potential new buyer and some of their questions, and looking for support for the town. And lastly, just a reminder to the council and the public, starting next month, we move to your summer meeting schedule, so months of July and August, you'll meet only once. Certainly, if, if the need is there, I suspect you, you could meet more than that if you wished, but that will be July 18 and August 15. With that, I'm available for questions.
Questions, the town manager. Seeing none, we'll go to Counselor Comments, and start down with Counselor Bayvine.
First, I wanted to congratulate the graduating class of 2018. I believe graduation's this weekend, I saw all the blooms out today, so good luck to them and be safe, you know, and thank you to the teachers and the parents and everyone who contributed to their success. As I mentioned on the second meeting in June, I probably won't be here unless it's, there's something absolutely requires me to come back from Waterville, but I will be away to the American Legion's Boy State Program. I do that every year, half a 35 years. And I always miss the exciting stuff up there when I do come back, like the year that the governor made a pretty disparaging comment to a young man and his father, but, so I really like being there just to, just to see what happens when the governor comes. But I also wanted to thank the volunteers. I think we lost a lot... I think we lost a lot in the conversation around the appointments, because we should be celebrating every person that wants to step forward and volunteer for this town. I sent off an email to the to the manager and to the Chair tonight, asking them to consider the continuation of the Municipal Volunteer of the Year Award that we started last year that we gave to Kevin Freeman for his dedication in the many committees, and I hope that we continue that, because our volunteers, especially on those boards, sometimes it's not a lot of fun, it can be very political, they should be thanked and awarded or rewarded, at least with an honor of being recognized. So please thank everyone. We have plenty of other committees. We still have room on the Cable TV Committee. I have one more full-time, full position and one alternate. I'm going to still continue working on that, but we're excited. We will be meeting soon on that. And then I just wanted to mention, you know, one of the things I've learned over the years in doing this so many years, is that sometimes I'll go home and every once in a while, I'll click through the Cable TV channel and I watch the meeting, and I do a self-assessment about the comments that I make, the way I make it, as well as everyone else, you know? We all judge each other, I guess, in some way, and I really hope that everyone does that, because I think that the reason why we're losing trust in the community isn't because of of pointing members or volunteers tonight outside of the rules, it's the way that we talk to each other, because it doesn't sound good, and that's where we're losing them. So I hope that people, and by the way, communication goes both ways. So if you're going to be pointing the finger, you better be looking in a mirror, because it's going to be pointed back at you, and that's how I kind of look at it, because I sat back and listened to as much as I could without being personal, and it was not a good exchange, and that's got to stop. So thank you.
Council Rowan.
Nothing, thank you.
Council Foley.
Also wanted to congratulate the graduates. It's a big time in their life and an exciting time, and wish them the best of luck, be safe first and foremost. Also wanted to remind people to get out and vote next Tuesday. Your vote is your voice, and that's where you weigh in the most. And then, lastly, I would just say I concur with Council babe, and I I think that sometimes emotions get the best of us, and we can all do better. Honestly, it was not my intent to stir any pots tonight, but just express concerns that I felt were legitimate and ask questions, and I have to feel safe to be able to do that, so I hope that's also equally respected, and that's it.
Council Katerina.
Yeah, just again, a reminder that the budget, school budget is up for a vote on June 12th, as well as a number of state, including primaries, political primaries, so hopefully people will show up. If I have my number correct, we've had, I'm going to look at Tody, about 1,000 people who voted absentee as of the end of day today.
That puts us down.
Which is not very many when you consider we have, what, over 15,000 registered voters in town. So I do know one of the choices in voting, you have yes, you have no, and you have don't show up, and that's a definite choice, is to not show up, but I've always said, if you don't show up, I don't want to hear you complaining, so show up, vote, make your voice known. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Hayes.
No thank you.
No comments.
Tomorrow is the last day for open voting for our June 12th election, Thursday. Friday and Monday are, as state law requires, restricted early voting. It's really the concept of absentee voting, when you're, have a legitimate reason to be absent and unable to vote. The vote on June 12th, I think those of us who voted for this budget strongly support it. I think the school budget is incredibly strong, fiscally responsible, the best budget that I have seen the school produce from a fiscal responsibility point of view. It's a level services budget. It will result in diminished services if it's cut further. The town budget is also a level services budget, and while the effect of the revaluation has been introduced as a a confusing element, to be kind, we all knew about it, and the actual increase is somewhere around 1.4 or less, because we have used conservative estimates. And if the revale had not come along, I would not have supported several items in this budget. I would not have supported the inclusion of $350,000 of reserve fund monies, for which our rainy day fund is already amply available to to meet whatever needs come from, comes from that property tax lawsuit. I would not have expensed $369,000 worth of funds directed at the residential revale. That's a 10- to 15-year occurrence, and those are often capitalized. Those two items, as well as the effort, and it was a good effort by the Finance Committee to to expense items that would normally be capitalized, but in an effort to be more fiscally responsible with our treatment of our bond levels, we put those in the expense column, and if we had to get below 3% because there was no revaluation, we would have done it. At least I would have been quite confident of being able to do it with those particular items, but because we had a revaluation, we had the ability to sock more money away in the reserve accounts, we had the ability to expense a residential revale, which is a real bump in in any budget, $369,000, and we had the ability to protect our bond totals by expensing a whole series of items that would normally have been bonded. So I think the public needs to know that. It's hard to get all that on a little placard out there on the corner of the street, but that story has to be told. If you don't understand the effort that goes into the Finance Committee and then the seven members of the town council, as well as the Board of Education, then you don't understand that the budget has been developed in an exceedingly responsible manner, and and supporting this budget is, would be a very appropriate thing to do. Lastly, I think I'd like to schedule for July 18th a workshop on goals. We have a goals document that was circulated that had some suggestions as to what would be action items on goals. I'll recirculate that so that people can be thinking about, well, how are we doing against the specific goals that we set? And we'll hold that at 6:00, I guess, on July 18th. So with that, I'll accept that motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I think I need that. Thirty-first.
To adjourn.